Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, and we're in the North High School Boardroom, and we're the Finance and Operations Committee. If I could have Ms. Bishop, Ms. Brown, sorry about that, take the attendance.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Jessica Brown is here. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. And tonight on the agenda first is we have the Bill Munson Memorial Bench. And could we get some information about that?
Yes, we have our athletic director, Ms. Jingeris, here, and she will speak to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. As you all know, in December, we very suddenly and unexpectedly lost one of our teachers at South, who has also been a very longtime coach. He was a football coach and head lacrosse coach. So his family approached us about putting a memorial bench someplace on the South campus. And we, obviously knowing there's plant ops involved and changing the facility at large, we needed to come before the board. So we are looking to place a memorial bench. The design, the exact size, things like that haven't completely been decided yet. But the location of the bench would go behind the building. If you picture driving around the high school, the back weight room entrance, there's a road near the baseball field, that's the weight room entrance right there. So we're thinking putting the bench someplace near those stairs, because that's where Bill spent a lot of his time, in his whole time coaching, in and out of that door all the time. Kids are often there, waiting for rides, putting on their cleats, taking off their cleats, and things like that. So we're just looking for approval from the board to locate the bench on the South property in that location. The funding for the bench will come from Bill's family.
Is that that little road that goes behind the building?
Yes.
That little tiny road?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Any questions? Any comments?
Just one other thing to add. Obviously, we would work with Mr. Smith and plant ops to make sure that where the locate the final location and installation would not cause more work for his staff or his department, as well as not impede any of the irrigation or anything like that.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to move to approve the Bill Munson Memorial Bench to be located near the back entrance of the Nashville High School South Athletic Wing. Funding for the project will be provided by the Munson family. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. The next thing on the agenda is the Birch Hill Elevator.
Okay, so Mr. Smith was unable to make it tonight, so I'll speak to the Birch Hill Elevator. The elevator is not currently working. So, and I'm not 100% sure how they found out it wasn't working, if it was relatively recent. There is a student that needs to use the elevator, but since it's not working, the student won't be able to. But we did reach out to just one company, which is Stanley, because it's a Stanley elevator. So you basically got to use Stanley parts for a Stanley elevator. So it's not the type of thing we could bid. And the hydraulic power unit needs to be replaced. We have spoken with Stanley. They can do the work, but they don't have the part. They have to order the part. It could be five to six weeks by the time the part is received and then put in. So we wanted to move this along as fast as possible. So the request is to approve a contract with Stanley Elevator in the amount of $28,930 to repair the elevator at Birch Hill Elementary. Funds to come from the district's deferred maintenance account.
So I guess my question is, if we have any students who are handicapped that need that elevator, what are they, what's happening to them in the meantime?
Yeah, I don't know. My guess is there's, I did hear that there was one student that was coming back, I think it's a broken leg or something like that. So I don't know what they're going to do. But you only need it, it won't be for all students, just the students on the second floor, which I think are the fourth and fifth grades.
Okay, so it wouldn't be really impacting anybody at this point? Maybe a student with a broken leg?
There's one student with a broken leg, who I believe his class is on the second floor. Other than that, I don't think it'll affect anyone else.
Okay, because if the classes are on the second floor, then that student can't get up to the second floor.
Yeah, I don't know what the workaround for that will be, but...
Okay. Any questions? Any comments?
This seems to be a priority, so we should get it done.
Yep. I move that the Board of Ed award contracts to Stanley Elevator Company in the amount of $28,930 to repair the elevator at Birch Hill Elementary School. Funds will come from the school district deferred maintenance account. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Okay. That was easy, moving right along here. The copier update?
Okay, so three years ago, when we reached out, working with our copier consultant, SPC, it was, some of the copy machines that we had were still in reasonably good shape and still had some years left on their useful lives. Others needed to be replaced. So what we decided to do was, part one of the lease was a three-year lease, and we replaced approximately half of the machines, based on the ones that had the most use and repair calls. Now, what we're looking for here is, this is the second part of the lease, so this was the plan all along. So the last payment on the first part of the lease is going to be made in August of '23. And then we have the options on the sheet that I gave you. If you look down towards the bottom, there's three-year and a four-year option. I'm suggesting, for budget reasons, we choose the four-year option. That's the amount approximately we've been paying each year for the last three years. So I think it probably makes sense. But this will replace all the machines that weren't replaced the first time. So effective this summer, we'll have machines, no machines in the, no copiers that are more than four years old, which is pretty good for copiers. If you've ever dealt with copiers, which most people have, once they start going, they, it's tough to get them to fix again. The best way to frustrate a teacher and administrator is to have the copy down for a couple of days. When I first came to the district, we had a mess of all kinds of copiers and all kinds of, there was way too much time spent on copier repair. So I think what we've done, working with SPC, has significantly improved things. And by putting it on a lease, we can budget about $105,000, $106,000 a year. It pays for everything as far as all the, it does not pay for the paper and the staples, but it pays for the repairs, and it pays for the machines themselves. So basically, there's a cost, and it's a third of a cent for black and white, and about four and a half cents for color. So as you can see, there's a significant difference between black and white and color. That's why we've put in place that there's only certain machines that have color. Typically, they're in the office, so they can be somewhat guarded, so to speak. And the machines are all set to print to black and white. You have to go, it's a default to black and white. You have to go in and choose color. So basically, we need an approval of this proposal, and like I said, I'd suggest the four-year option, which would have an annual lease amount of $107,502.26. Any other questions on that?
Ms. Brown?
So just a little quick recap to clarify. That's the cost, just to have the printers in the building, and then the copies are the third of a cent, et cetera, on top of that.
Yes, the 107 is basically to purchase the copiers, and then the cent per copies, you pay that, and that covers the copy, the toner, the repairs, all that, everything but staples and paper.
And the four-year lease deal is pretty on line with our current payment?
Yes.
Yeah. This is just actually separately than this. I was reading about another school district, not in New Hampshire, that they actually use a copy center to centralize, like, large copy, a centralized copier station. So essentially, if a teacher knows that they're going to need 40 copies of a workbook for the next school year, they can send in, they say, "I need this on this date," and they centralize that kind of thing. And it did a great job cutting their costs and their time out of the classroom. You still need copiers in the buildings anyway for day-to-day printing. But I'm wondering if that's something that might be worth consideration down the line.
I guess you'd have to look to see if you, because who would run it? You'd need sort of a person involved to run the machines. And then, do we have enough of a need for that? We are moving away from copies towards more electronic things. I know the high school especially with Google, and they've moved away from it significantly. There's still copies, obviously. Elementary tends to have more. And there are some of those books, like you mentioned, because with subscriptions, we buy the subscription, you don't buy the books, the textbook anymore, and then you print out those things. We have, twice a year, we do, we reach out, we get a bid from a printer, and we get those kind of things done that way.
Oh, excellent. I'm glad to hear that.
Mr. Claffey? Do you have any questions?
Yes, just, is the price ceiling, has that been in effect the last couple of years of this contract?
Yes.
And what is it, what is that currently?
The price for the...
Ceiling, the ceiling.
The price per copy or the price for the purchase?
The price ceiling. I was just seeing that in the future, the future, or soon, currently, it's 5% of the CPI, and I was just wondering what it is now? Whether there's a change in this ceiling?
Oh, in the, no, I believe that's the 5% still there. That's been the amount all the way through.
Do you need a motion on this, or is this just information?
No, I need a motion to approve the four-year lease option with SPC.
I move to give the four-year lease option with SPC in the amount of, is it going to be that $107,000?
Correct.
$107,502.26. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. The next thing is our crossing guard update, which isn't good.
No, it isn't good. Chris Lassard, our safety and security officer, pulls this together twice a year, typically in September, and then sort of halfway through the school year. And as you can, as you can see, we have only about half our slots filled. Most of those slots do not have a signal. I think four or five of them do, and the rest of them don't. There's 16 total vacancies. This has been a struggle for the past few years. We actually had one of our crossing guards get hit the other day over by Dr. Crisp. So the gentleman's in the hospital, and hopefully he'll be out soon, but I don't know all the details. The problem that we've had, the hourly rate is $17.03 an hour. So it's not necessarily the hourly rate, it's the number of hours you work. So as Chris mentioned in here, you know, one of the options would be every shift should be a minimum of an hour. So if you're going to do a post, it would be a minimum of two hours a day. Would that work? I don't know. With the price of gas and everything, if the person has to drive, it doesn't make lots of sense. If the person can walk, you know, across the street or down the street to the post, then it might make more sense. I did not increase the budget this year for the crossing guards, because I'm not 100% sure whether this would work or not. But it's certainly something that if, you know, at some point, if we want to discuss this. I don't know if there's another way, you know, are crossing guards going away? Is there another way of doing this? I mean, I don't know. And I guess one of the things that might make sense is to sort of get a sense of how many students are crossing at each one of these crossing spaces, locations. Because if there's three or four students, does it really make sense to have someone there? Now, for the safety of the student, yes. On the other hand, if you're there for 45 minutes, and there's only three or four students, gets to be kind of a tedious job.
Sure.
What's our district policy on the distance you have to wait from a, live away from a school to be bused, and what, and whether there's a sidewalk or not?
Well, the sidewalk would factor in. It's a mile. And actually, I'll have that information tomorrow on the transportation update as part of the budget. But I'm pretty sure it's a mile, and, but if there's no sidewalk, or it's a busy street, let's say like Broad Street or Main Dunstable, typically, we don't have the students walk across those roads. Buses will pick those students up if they have to get, like Cherrywood, for example, which is right across the street, those students are all bussed because of the busy street.
So I guess that's kind of where my line of thought is going. I think it'd be worth looking into how many students are actually utilizing specific places. I'm thinking a lot around my neighborhood, specifically at Birch Hill, where there's students that walk from the Stony Brook neighborhood over across Dublin, and they need a crossing guard because there's no sidewalk. But would it actually be more cost-effective to have the bus, one of the last buses loop through there and just pick them up on the way? And if a parent wanted to walk at that point, they'd be kind of at their own risk to let their students walk. Is there a way that we could do kind of a study or a report or something to knowing whether, you know, so we can prioritize where we need to have our full-time, our regular crossing guards?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we're, we have interviews for the new transportation director Friday. Hopefully, we'll get a good candidate. But maybe that's something that might be able to be looked into if we bring in Chris Lassard, meets with the transportation director, he talks about the posts that are maybe most needed. Would a bus help? That's possible, I guess. Depends on how many students are on the bus, and, you know, the timing, et cetera. But probably something worth looking at, yes. Good idea.
Chris, today I was down by Dr. Crisp's school, and that's a very busy intersection. I had, it was around 8:00 this morning, and the crossing guard there has a little yellow cone out there, and he's crossing the kids. You know, that's a very busy intersection. So I know that the busy intersection should be looked at first, and then, like you said, with the walkers. Because we used to have, like, to Main Dunstable, safe walk to school, they had like the little green paths. At one time, we put, we put in, it wasn't under Mayor Donches, it might have been under Bernie Street, or maybe a little bit under Donneli Lozo, something like that. And I know there's areas that you have to say, what, on, if you don't have a crossing guard on a main intersection, could you put one of those crossing lights in that would stop the traffic? Because I know that on West Hollis Street, where we have the charter school, you can't get in and out, and I've asked over and over again, and nobody walks there, but it's just the cars that can't get in and out. So it's very dangerous. So I think that that's something to look at, and, you know, the feasibility with the buses and the cost of it also. How many, would you have to add routes? And in the contract, too? Would this affect the contract?
Well, if we added buses, it would affect the contract. But I think the thing to look at is, let's say, the third tier, so the elementary, the late elementary schools, if there's some time in the schedule to add, pick up a couple more streets, because the bus isn't full. I guess, for safety reasons, you might be able to do it. Then do we start, you know, does that lead to an issue where, well, they're getting picked up, so I want to be able to get picked up? So, I mean, there are towns, like London Dairy, I think, for example, that they pick up all the students, just about, you know, plenty of parents drive, or, but there aren't lots of walkers in towns like that. The buses pick up almost everyone. But, you know, if we were to do that, that would cost, we'd have to add a lot of buses, there'd be significant cost to that.
And plus, you're comparing London Dairy to Nashua, it's like apples to oranges, because you've got a town versus a city.
Yes.
We don't have any oranges?
But at one time, maybe when Nashua was smaller compared to now, Nashua's growing, what are we, about 90,000, if not more residents in the city, and how many students?
Could, would that be something we could request through this committee, or have to go through the full board, to request, maybe that you get together with the new director of transportation and Chris Lassard, and see if there's a strategy we can kind of put in place? And then I'm thinking, probably if we were to change that, to alleviate the pains of people saying, "Why are they getting picked up and not me?" We'd probably have to make sure we update our policy. You know, it can't just be the decision of a mile. That's, I know, I realize that's a lot of work, but if we could at least have some guidelines to get us started on maybe doing some kind of a study, would that be, what do you think the timeline on something would that would be if we made that request?
Well, I mean, it's getting the person in first, right, and then getting them trained up. It may be a while, because you got to think, the new person comes in, they have the summer school routes, and then they have the school opening routes. Now, maybe if they're familiar with the software, and they've, it could be sooner, but my guess is it would be after the start of school next year. But once, once the school, about a month after school starts, there is a little bit of a lull, and maybe that's the time that the discussion and could happen, you know, sometime in October.
The principals probably, especially, particularly, I'm thinking mostly in the elementary is where you have a lot of, like, a lot more of that. They might actually have a pretty good pulse on which students are actually walking to school, or which students are getting dropped off every day. Maybe we go that route, is the parents say, "If you like a bus, if within this area, a bus is, will be available, unless you're going to be driving your student every day, we're not going to waste time stopping in front of your house and honking the horn."
Well, you really wouldn't be stopping in front of the house and honking the horn. That's basically for special ed that comes up to the door. I mean, I guess the question is, if parents are driving their students to school, then you don't have to worry about the walking and the danger of this. And the question becomes, how much of this do you want to open up? It's like opening up a can of worms on other kids that should maybe be picked up, but you can't do it because they're within that mile. And how much is it's going to cost to try to get more buses out there? If you do one neighborhood, you're going to expect to have parents in here to do all the neighborhoods that kids have to walk. And so I feel that it should be, but you can't always accommodate everybody on some of this. My kids went to Lead Street, so we bused them across the highway. We didn't go to Main Dunstable, because that's where the school was. They didn't have an opportunity to walk. But, I mean, it's just a question of, we need to see what intersection maybe needs to, if we can get a crossing guard there, to prevent any problems there. We should be starting with that first, to see if we can, what areas are most needed on top of all this. And in the Birch Hill area, because it says Birch Hill and Woodland, and I would say that's a bad intersection. And that's what they're talking about here right now. I don't want it to come out to that they get the busing, we don't get the busing, but we can't bus their kids because the buses are full. Now what do we do? And that's going to turn into a nightmare of a situation. I know that people have talked about, everybody get a bus, free bus pass, free everything, but the free doesn't come down as free, because somebody has to pay for that, and that becomes taxpayers have to pay for everything here. So there's no such thing as free, because those tax bills went up high enough this year, they'll go up more to accommodate everybody. And people who cannot afford it are getting, they do get bus passes, don't they? If they can show hardship?
Yes.
Okay. So we do take care of that. So, did you need a motion? Any other questions? Mr. Claffey?
So why would the minimum be two hours? I don't understand, I don't know how there's, I understand they want a full hour. Why would it be, if I heard, two hours?
Well, one in the morning, one in the afternoon.
Okay. So I guess I would ask if we would consider moving Mr. Lassard's proposal to the full board, giving them a full hour.
Well, I think that would probably be a budget, a discussion in the budget.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Because we probably wouldn't do it this year. If we were going to do it, we'd do it next year, and we're gonna...
That's what I figured.
So he's asking about next, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay, I understand.
In advance, and that's good, we're being proactive here.
Yes.
You know, so we know where we're coming from. Any more questions or comments about this? Okay, the next one is the FY '23 February Financial Report.
Okay, so I'll run through the report quickly. We're getting pretty close, probably not next month, but the month after that, I'll start giving you the forecast for this year. But this report, if you look at the month by month, one through February, so we've got four months left in the school year and the budget year. And just looking at the, sort of the total wages, you can see, for example, when the wage is full-time, the first line, you can see 6.8, last month was 6.8, November was 6.8. Those are all the months where you have two bi-weekly payrolls and four weekly payrolls. So that's basically what that will cost. So by taking a look at March, April, May, and June, three of those four months will be the same, two bi-weeklies and four, no, actually, two will be that. March is going to be three bi-weeklies and five weeklies, so that's going to be close to $10 million. And then June is going to have, that'll be a two and four, it could be two and, four and a half or something. But if I use those numbers, sort of stretch them out, just, and see where we've spent, and then the one piece I don't have is the summer payment, but using last year's summer payment, we should be okay in this area, which is obviously the most, most important area because of the significance of the, of the cost. So those two wages are fine. Like I said, I do a more detailed analysis in a couple of months. Overtime seems to be running about the same every month. The longevity, you can see in January and February, so we've paid $442,000. There's one union left, the Paras, they get theirs at the, in April. So that should bring us, I already have an estimate of what that is, so that should bring us to about $550,000 or so for longevity. We should be fine there. Stipends this month includes the middle school athletic coaches, along with the head teachers and a few, couple other small ones. So that's okay. And then the retirement separation pay, that's for an administrator that left last month. So that's a bit over the budget, that line item, but we should be able to cover it with some other items. Now that we've passed a couple of contracts... Now that we've passed a couple of contracts, the city takes the funds that we put aside for a contract and then they give them back to us. That hasn't happened yet. As you can see, that's the very last, that salary adjustment's 58,000. So the, the AFSCME contract was approved, and they're looking at it before they sign it, but that should happen this week sometime. So that money can come over, and then the clerical and should come over after that, and then hopefully the parrot towards the end of the, end of April, let's say. So we're okay there. Fringe benefits, really not too much. Legal services, that's typically Attorney Clausen, Attorney Bennett, and the costs associated with that case where a number of school districts are trying to increase the adequacy, the base adequacy rate. So those, those invoices come in from that law firm, Wadley Star, I believe is who it That case is going to court in April, so we'll see what happens. But anytime there's a, who knows what happens with cases like this? They could go on forever, they, they could end quickly. The next one, staffing services, that's about 82,000. That's the ESS, the company that gets the subs. You can see it's, it's less than January, but we had one less week of school. Not too much else there that is odd. Flipping over to page two. So property services, the first three of the utilities, electric, gas, and water. We're probably going to run over on the electricity versus what we budgeted. I'll be working with Mr. Smith over the next couple of months to get a, get a better handle on that. If you recall, we, we have a, we borrowed money to improve the two high schools, and there should be some savings. That analysis has not taken place for this year, so we'll, we'll see what happens. I think that's scheduled for in the spring, so we'll have to take a look at that. The other two, heating, gas, and water, might be slightly over or fairly close, but heating gas, the key will be the month of March and early April. After that, the costs go way down. All right, other than that, there's mostly maintenance type things that are managed by Mr. Smith. So some of them, the only one that looks fairly high on use is the vehicle repairs. It's 91% used. Hopefully, there's no more vehicles that need to be repaired above the 7,000 that's available.
Can I ask a question on that? Where do the vehicles get repaired?
It depends on the vehicle. The big trucks, they use the city. There's only two of those, though. For the vans, most of what we drive around is the vans that the, the tradespeople and the plumbers, et cetera, use. Those Gary Connors gets, I don't know exactly where he sends them. He'd been using one or two places whoever could get it in sooner, but they're both shops in Nashua.
I think I asked Sean about this. Do we have any fleet contracts?
No, we don't. We typically purchase through Gripeni, which has the state contract. We get the vehicle, and then we pretty much drive it until, you know, there's, there's the whole SURF process with the city, the capital, you know, so we'll put things on there and, but that changes all the time. You know, we, we forecast what we think's going to be needed to change out. Sometimes it's something totally different.
But we don't have a fleet contract to do repairs?
No, we don't.
Have we ever looked into, I know I asked that last year, looked into it and to see if we could save money on that?
I'm not aware of that. I, as far as I know, we haven't done that.
Okay. I'm just looking that if we could save money on a fleet contract, you know, where you get your, you know, if you get an oil change, you do certain things, a tune-up, whatever, that you might be able to save money on it, on a fleet contract.
All right. I mean, like I said, I'm not familiar with that. We could look into it, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other services, the 5500 series, you notice telephone voice is a negative number this month. And that's basically, we got a check from E-Rate to pay for some of the internet. So that check was put there, which offset the cost for the month, so it's actually a small negative number, but that will, will help that account. Other than that, there's mostly small items here. If you look at the very bottom line, you'll see regular transportation services, you see that's 750,000, which is basically two months. If you look January, there was just 18,000. So that's the January bill and the February bill were both in February. And when you flip to the next page, page three, you'll see the same thing for the special ed transportation services. Tuition out of district, we had to cancel our meeting this week, but we have another one set up for next week. But we've been meeting pretty much monthly, and we should be able to stay within budget for that account this year. You know, unless there's, the further on we get in the year, the less, sometimes you have students that move into town that are already at and out of districts, so you're going to continue that placement, at least in the beginning. But even if that were to happen with only a few months left, it, it shouldn't impact this year too much, could impact next year. Supplies and materials, there's really not too much there. It's just average spends. If you take a look on the far right, percent used, for the most part, it's in the 60s and 70s. So a lot of this is either athletics or Sean or the schools, different mixes, and we should be fine there. Indirect cost allocation is, it's, it's a higher negative, which is a good thing, and that's mainly because of the S R spending, so that number's higher so far this year. And on page four, we have the equipment, the computer equipment, computer software. As you can see, the percent used on those is high, but that's because most of that spending happens early in the year. Besides that, it, it looks fine. Debt service is done for the year. And so that sort of brings us to the end. We're at 56.47%. We have four months left, and the teacher pay for the summer. So I think we'll be fine. Like I said, I'll have the more detailed forecast probably in May through April.
Any questions, any comments? One quick question before I forget. Santa Life, did we get it all installed in the schools that we were supposed to?
I believe it's all installed, yes.
All installed?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, now on to the transfer report.
Okay, you're going to start seeing more transfers because we're getting towards the end of the year. The schools do most of their buying by the end of May. So what you're going to start to see, and you'll see it, a number of these entries where they're moving funds from, let's say, equipment lines to supply lines, and they're going to spend on their supply lines. And that's exactly what you see from the first one. It's Fairgrounds Middle School. They're taking some computer budget that they didn't use, putting it into supplies, and then they'll buy certain supplies for the school. Same goes for the next one, which is Bicentennial. They're doing the same thing, taking it from seminars that they didn't go to. The next one is Mount Pleasant, same sort of thing. They're taking it from some of the departments that didn't spend it, and they're putting it into 1160, which is sort of the school general program. But either way, they're just putting it in one place to make purchases. Same for the next one, Career Center, Nashua High South. That's been down for the rest of the year. They took it out of maintenance, put it into supplies. The next one is the North CTE Program, 1,000, and they're moving it from equipment to supplies. That's the tech ed. So they have a Home Depot open PO, so they can go to Home Depot and get various supplies for the program. So they've done that. Next one is Drivers Ed, where they charged something to the wrong account. They, they, so they're taking it from repairs and maintenance and putting it to supplies so they can cover the cost of vehicle they repaired. Next is the, the Technology Center again, moving stuff into supplies. So you can see the various, that's what most of these entries are related to. Okay, the next one is much more significant. It's $97,000. We're moving it from a labor account into contracted services. So these were, there were two teachers that were in the budget, special ed, specific types of special ed teachers. We were unable to hire them. We still needed to provide the services, so we, using an outside contractor to provide those services, so we took it out of labor and put it into contracted service. We've had to do that the last about three years or so, more than we'd like to, but. And then the next one is central office. We had a credit that rolled over from one year to the next on the copiers, and the credit came about during COVID when we weren't using the copiers, and we had prepaid, so we just rolled over that credit. So it's been sitting there, and I said, okay, well, we hired the redistricting, and I think you guys have had an update from, from that consultant. So this is basically what the cost of that contract was. So I took the money, to get the money, that wasn't budgeted. The redistricting consultant wasn't budgeted, so that's where I took the money, and that's what that 45 is. And the last one is Nashua Athletics, and that's same sort of thing, taking excess officials and putting it down into some dues and memberships. So most of the schools put their budgets together, sort of a, you know, more than a year in advance, and then as needs change, they'll do these sorts of entries and do the spend down.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Claffey?
Just curious, on the, where the signatures are, right? There's no space to print names. Do you see the need to add that? I mean, I just was trying to figure out a few signatures. Yours I knew, and I see that Lee Jingeris wrote or entered her name. Did you ever think about, do you have a big pile of pre-printed forms you don't want to throw out?
No, I don't. That came up a few years back. I can't remember who the board member was that asked it. Once I get someone in to help me, we can go back to doing that. Because what's, what's happening now is I get all these entries. I don't even have time to put them in now, so I'm reaching out to someone at the city to help me. So I'm just transferring, you know, sending PDFs back and forth, and then I go through a verification process to make sure they all got in. But it, that's, it's a good control to make sure that, you know, you know, you know, like, like you said, some people write things so you tell their signature clearly, other people squiggle. So we will get back to doing that. Give me a few more months.
Any other questions, concerns? Okay. I'll move to accept the transfer report for February 2023.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Donovan?
That is all I have for tonight.
Anybody have any comments that pertains to this committee? Okay, I'll obtain a motion.
Move to adjourn?
All those in favor say aye.
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 None opposed, motion carries. And we are adjourned. I can't see the clock.
6:47.
6:47. Thank you, everyone.